All right, we now call the Wednesday, July 12th meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do the reading of the mission statement, please?
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Thank you, and the vision statement?
Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service.
All right, thank you both. All right, we're gonna start off tonight with our public commentary. Bridgette, we've got a couple of people signed up, is that right?
And first up, we have Lily Vincent.
Okay, and as you're walking up, Lily, I'm gonna say a few words. So for those who wish to comment at tonight, the maximum, at the, we're gonna be tonight, maximum time is five minutes. Please keep your comments backfaced and within the time permitted. They're not to be personally directed or abusive. Comments recognizing the work of staff and students are always welcome. However, critical remarks concerning specific school personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process available in policy 8130. Also, only agenda items can be discussed during public commentary. So hopefully you've had a chance to look through the agenda items that are discussed. And I do wanna say it is different, the work session is different than a board meeting, which is why the, only the agenda items. So with that in mind, is that something that you're?
Uh, it's not.
Okay. So is there anything on the agenda that is something you're willing to comment on?
Yes, I can make this relate.
Yeah.
Okay, so hello, everybody. I'm here on, I'm Lily Vincent, I'm the Harvard art teacher. I'm here on behalf of the Richmond Education Association Racial Equity Coalition. I think especially because you are discussing the initiation of a police force within the school district, we need to be thinking a lot about race and how we can be thoughtful going forward. So we are a group of educators, community members, and stakeholders who are working to support and further the school board's goal of promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in Richmond Community Schools. Most of you guys have spoken to some of our members, and we're really excited that the majority of you are in support of a equity policy. I'm here to ask that you prioritize that creation and pass the DEI policy for our students. This is a policy that is a bottom-up commitment to our students and our community. I've heard from many of you that we must hire more Black and Latino educators. This is true, but are we showing our Black and Latino students that Richmond Community Schools cherishes and supports them? Is this a community that those students want to stay in? Right now, the answer is no. Our teachers are told, anything that promotes Black Lives Matter is not allowed. So thank you for your time, I hope to speak with you guys soon.
And also in this format, we are able to interact. So if anyone has questions or comments for Lily in regards to this, this thought, as a, you know, DEI as it pertains to the police.
Thank you for letting me speak even though it wasn't related.
It is related. Good pivot, Lily. Totally related, okay. Any, any thoughts or comments? All right, next Bridgette?
Next, we have Richmond Police Department's Chief Mike Britt.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mike Britt, I'm the Chief of Richmond County Police Department. I felt it necessary for me to speak to this group today just so that everybody present here and the public knows that this is not something that came up overnight. Dr. Wright, myself, Mayor Snow, we've had a series of meetings and which culminated in the concept of creating Richmond Community Schools Police Department. That was not my first choice, just to be honest, and I made it clear from, from the beginning of this. I feel that Richmond police officers should be policing Richmond Community Schools. However, the condition of our industry in general, especially local, I don't have the manpower to support that, and I am sorry for that. But what you have chosen to do is an all-on-you're-taking. And I have, you and your administrative staff, we've had some very, very important discussions about this. And I also wanna speak for just a moment, I think you're on the right path with this. It's not easy to create a police department. The key thing that is needed to create a police department is design, design even leader for that police department. From what I understand, you're considering Rick Valls to lead this department. I am here to voice my support for that selection as Rick Valls is Chief of Richmond Community Schools Police Department. I've known Rick for a long time, Rick and I have a similar background that goes back to being crime secret best of years, especially trained for that. In anticipation of this, Rick and I have also had a couple of personal meetings in my office as far as the development of this. I can't tell you everything that needs to happen to create a police department, but I do believe you're on the right path, the subject that we have discussed that we've mentioned and very deeply. So in short, I, I support the selection of Rick Valls as your first Chief of Richmond Community Schools. I also want to make it clear that Richmond Police Department and the city of Richmond support you in this endeavor. And anything that we can do to assist you in development of this new police department, we'd like to take part in. Congratulations, you have a police department. I have a little ball of titanium on my car, I'm gonna give Rick before I leave. That's, that's all I have to say, the thank you for allowing me to speak. Chief Britt, thank you, sir.
No, we really appreciate your support, your coming here, your partnership, your, it, it was good for us to be able to collaborate with you to get to this point.
It wasn't easy at first.
I'm sure the collaboration is no longer in your fashion.
No, it's not.
But together, we're in the city of Richmond, we're here to support you.
We all have the common good of the kids in mind.
Safety and welfare for our children.
Yep.
Again, Chief, just as you mentioned, throughout the course of our dialogue, throughout the course of our continued partnership, the humility that we all have engulfed and been engulfed through and with has been remarkable. The guidance, support, wisdom, the insight, as well as also helping us anticipate processes to avoid and detour and now get around issues that other school corporations felt victim to, as a result of not having strength and partnerships. So your presence here this, this evening and throughout the course of this forum, we're going to continue, as you mentioned and as you started with, to assure our community that we're just as safe as we happen and we're gonna work to continue to increase, enhance upon our safety and security. All the partnership that we had been in with Richmond Police Department in the past, the county Sheriff's Department, no matter what, just as you finished it included with, we know that we can count on you along with the Sheriff's Department, IU East Police, Reed Hospital, this has been a collective endeavor to make sure that our faculty, staff, students, and stakeholders visit our schoolhouses are safely there. So thank you so much for being here. Other board members? Or central office staff?
There's a ton of work that goes into the development of police force. I really appreciate your time and efforts to work with our administration and make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. I just really appreciate it.
It's my honor to provide any guidance that I can. The most important thing that we've mentioned here is, is the choice that I would get you considering tonight. This is something that I can work with, that's the most important. We have a lot of common sense backgrounds and, in order for me to be, I guess, the example that, that your department needs to be is, as we've previously discussed, we are always there. Richmond Community Schools as the Richmond Police Department. And there has been times when we've responded over here in situations I think you find that our response is very expedient. A call, Richmond Community Schools gets priority one in all cards. We have, we have had a minute and a half response times here, although I've constantly guaranteed that I can hear in two minutes. But yes, we take the security of schools very seriously.
And I concur with what you referenced as far as the ownership and pride that you made your bales as well as made your tonnage.
Yes.
And, and the team, as well as Mayor Snow. The ownership and pride that you all have exhibited throughout the course of this process. You wanted to make sure that our schools are safe and wanted to, as you mentioned, go about it, doing it under your own departments. The tool that should hurt you, but with the certain senses that you have with personnel, with some of those challenges, you support the community so much.
I can talk forever on this, but you brought up one key point I wanna bring up. Is I have the distinct advantage and pleasure to have two deputy chiefs. We are a team, and it takes everything that all three of us have to make this run. Your Chief of Police is the one you need to have team members that he can rely on as well. So it's very important that under this roof, he has team players, because he can't, he won't be able to do it all.
And not to steal his thunder as he comes up, but we will have the same tier-one wobbly officer as we've always had, and we're looking to add to our, our number of officers. So I see, Attorney Cross is?
I just wanted to emphasize one thing for the public, because it kinda sounds like we're, like, spitting our chest to hit the tape, the finish line. And in fact, this is very much an embryonic state of development of our police department. And we couldn't have gotten to where we are without certainly the help and consultation of the Chief. But there's a lot of work yet to do. The media has said, well, there's a lot of questions they have about the details. Well, there's a lot of questions we have about the details, and those details are sometimes yet to be determined. The difference between creating the police force, which I think we can say we have done, and activating it are two different things, and that's gonna, the activation process is where we'll be going now, and we'll certainly be relying upon your expertise, I'm sure, and that of the sheriff. I can't emphasize enough, I've been involved in this since, gosh, I think we, the first time we really undertook the SROs is when Ms. Hollis was here, and we had the Safe Schools Grant, and that helped us get off the ground. And I believe Sheriff Stripman was the one involved at the time, I could be wrong about that. But in any event, it was so obvious the benefit of the program and once the grant expired, there was no question that the board was gonna find monies to continue to fund it, and has done so. And I think it's just an evolution to where, now we're probably to the point where we need to kinda take the next step, and that's what we're talking about doing. But it would be totally dishonest or intellectually dishonest not to recognize the contributions the Sheriff's Department's have made in the past and always having the backup of RPD, particularly with the elementary when we weren't able to sign an SRO to the elementary. So it's, it's been a team effort that got us this far, and it's gonna have to continue to be a team effort.
Yes, sir.
So that's us saying thank you.
This is me saying thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion on this matter. This means a lot to me, even though I don't work here. Just the safety of the children, this community. It's a huge issue for me, as I said before, I wish that I were sufficient to, to supply the manpower, but honestly, I cannot.
Again, I, I wanted to speak for Sheriff Rutter, but if he were here, just to capitalize on the conversation I had with him, just as you had shaken my hand and given me your word that you have our backside and our end of our six covered. Sheriff Rutter has also mentioned that throughout the course of this process, he too is gonna be right there at our six, and so we appreciate your support.
You are now becoming a part of the collective as far as law enforcement resources. I wanna congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we move on to item 3.01, the consent items, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, I come before you all to ask for approval of consent item 4.01, human resources report, and it didn't pass, President.
I'll move.
All right, we've got a motion. For a second. All right, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, vote passes six to zero. Okay, next we have action items, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, I come before you for action item 5.01, 2023 updated school board meeting dates. The board approved the updated 2023 school board meeting dates due to fall break. The only meeting in October will be on the all. Now, October 18th, 2023 is what we are proposing and presenting. I come to you all for approval of a revision to the school board date to October 18th.
I'll motion approve the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, second. On the second. Any questions or comments? I simply wanna point out to the public that this was done because it landed on fall break, and we want anyone who is in our district to be able to actually attend our meetings instead of feeling like you have to choose between a board meeting and fall break. I know that's a tough choice, but, so that's kinda what we were looking at here, so. All right, so all those in favor, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six, zero. All right, moving on.
President Stoltz, trustees, for action item 5.02, I ask that Mrs. Karen Skow join the forum for request for approval, Mrs. Skow.
Good evening, tonight before you is the memorandum of understanding for adult education at the Wayne County Jail. We have continued this program for a number of years, and for the 23, 24 school year, we would like to continue this program. It is a very positive resource for our community, and we do see quite a bit of use in the Wayne County jail program for these courses. So it's my recommendation tonight that we approve the MLU with Wayne County for jail services for adult education.
I'll make the motion to approve 4.02.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any questions or comments?
I think there's gonna be a change in the primary educator in the jail. Is this?
Yes, there is.
That is.
Has, has that person already been selected?
They have, and they've actually already, I believe, gone through the HR process. So we are excited to welcome Lori Fowler with us, and she has been active in our community for a little while, doing other things. But she will now be a part of the education program at the Adult Education Center in the jail. So they are really excited to have her on board. We have a really great team over there of teachers that not only, only teach adult ed, but we also have a few high school teachers that go over in the evenings and assist as well. So it's a super great team, they are looking forward to this new addition, and it'll be another great opportunity to do good things for our community.
I spoke with Mrs. Fowler, she actually went in and shadowed and just kind of was very impressed with the program as it, as it stands and was really excited to get in on it, so.
Yep.
She has big shoes to fill from Chris Riddell.
Yes.
And that's one thing I can't say thank you to Chris enough. He has been a tremendous partner in this, and he came out of retirement to do this for us. And so I think he'll still be around a little bit.
How many times did he tell me about his retirement?
Which four?
At least so.
Yeah, so, but he has been tremendous over there, and he has made giant strides as, as the educators there do. And so we cannot say thank you enough, he has just been wonderful.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six, zero, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, I ask that Mrs. Elizabeth Marwood join us for action item 4.0 agreement, the Head Start agreements, Marwood.
Good evening, tonight I bring to you our yearly agreement with Head Start. We recommend providing special education services for all Head Start locations within the Richmond Community School boundaries. This is a provision within Article 7 and supports our child find obligations. With this approval, we will provide services at the local educational agency for Head Start schools within the Richmond Community Schools District. So tonight I ask that the board approve the agreement for special education services with Head Start as presented.
I'll move that we approve 4.03 Head Start group.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Vote passes six, zero. All right, 5.04, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, I ask that Mrs. Marwood join us yet again for action item 4.04, exceptional education services agreements. Mrs. Mar.
Okay, next I'm bringing three agreements for your approval as outlined in the memo for this action item. The agreements are for our blind, low-vision mobility specialist services, occupational therapy services, and school psychologist services. All of these are required positions in our special education department, so I ask that the board approve these agreements as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I move we approve action item 4.04.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
These are just continuation agreements from what we've had in the past without change.
Yes, sir. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, vote passes six, zero, on to 5.05, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, I come before you for action item 4.05, 2024 preschool rates and tuition agreement. Given the charge sometime ago by our board to extend offerings for our community when it comes to preschool, we are excited to come before you and recommend that board of school trustees accept the following preschool rates in 2023, 2024 school year. Half-day rate of $5, which is no change to what previous practices have been, and a full-day rate, which is a new offering of $10. We can increase this consideration and add more upper-level management.
I'll motion approve 4.05, the preschool rates and tuition.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
I have a question about how is lunch handled, is that? I mean, are we just providing lunch?
For full day?
Yeah. And is that part of our grant, our?
So our, our school lunch program actually handles breakfast for the morning class. Afternoon class gets lunch, and then the all-day would get both. So it is a part of the funded program.
Even though they're not like K?
Yeah, so the, the national school lunch program can be prepaid through 12. So it does fit preschool, and they do have some different, like, measurements that have to be done, but all of that is coordinated through the services. So we have been doing that already, and it won't be a change to what we've actually did.
All right, so we have a motion on the table as well as a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six, zero, Dr. Wright, 5.06?
President Stoltz, trustees, for action item 4.06, I come before you, and it is our recommendation that the board of school trustees accept the member of understaffed from Indiana University Advanced College Project, also known as CCP, and the Indiana College Core, also known as ICC, for Richmond High School, for the 2023, 2024 school year.
We have a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve 4.06.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
This is strictly with IU East. Have we partnered on any of the college core with IB Tech? Or? Because we still have a discrepancy in our GPA weighting, I think, with IB Tech versus IU East classes, even though a college core is seen exactly the same by the state.
And so to answer your question, we have been in partnership with IB Tech in past practice, so I've been informed, just as of last year, we were looking to strengthen that partnership. IB Tech, there was personnel change that, that occurred, and at that particular time, we enhanced, increased our partnership with IB, Indiana University. However, with IB Tech, they have offerings that other school corporations around the C-Central Indiana area have really taken advantage of. We are currently and will continue to work alongside IB Tech to strengthen our, our offerings alongside the Indiana University offerings that have been offered in the past. And so collectively, over the course of time, as I've understood, both entities, whether it be Indiana University East and IB Tech, have worked collaboratively to see to that our students are receiving Google credit. However, to your question, we are truly looking forward to increasing Google credit and experience, offerings, opportunities for all of our students. I want to steal his thunder, I wanna introduce the world to Mr. Mark Fowler here shortly, our new Chief Secondary Education. And he can tell us more about himself, but also his background when it comes to Google credit and his passion and drive to see to it that our students are put in positions to be successful during their 9th through 12th experience. And so to answer your question, yes, in short, yes.
And this is working to? And this is working to build our ACP offerings over AP offerings, is that correct?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Working to build our ACP offerings versus the AP offerings?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir. And, and again, to also, as, as we'll come back.
All right, we've got a motion on the table. Oh, go ahead, sorry, John.
It's not an ACP or AP, I mean, they're different paths for different kids. I don't think we're replacing one with another.
No, this is the same annual recognition, understanding.
But there are dollars available to us on students that achieve their Indiana core. And, and it's probably more feasible through an ACP path than it is an AP path. Because you have to pass a test to get the AP. For the students, I think both options need to be available.
And they are.
So I would, would not be in favor of us going one route at the expense of the other. I think we can pursue both routes with totality and success. Our AP work, I think, needs work, and I think we will get there. But I would caution going down one lane and not both.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table as well as a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six, zero. Next we have 4.07, Dr. Wright?
President Stoltz, trustees, for action item 4.07, I ask that Mr. Brett Baker join the forum for approval, request for approval, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, it is the, it is the recommendation of the school board of trustees that you accept the 23, 24 RCS Code of Conduct as presented. Revisions have been made to the K twelve code of conduct as a response. Elementary and secondary behavior matrices have been created that are vertically aligned. Building and district level attendance interventions have been revised by our own, by our own attendance officers. Our administrators attended, attended attendance training with our juvenile prosecutor probation department and school resource officers to prepare supporting evidence. And also the dress code will be enforced.
Do we have a motion?
I will motion that we approve the two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty four RCS code of conduct.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Normally policies are a two-step process. Is this not seen as policies?
The code of conduct is basically being renewed every year, or revised every year.
Policy generates from the board of trustees. This code of conduct is basically a collaborative effort at building level, building levels among the principals there, and is submitted only for approval, not for adoption per se by the board of trustees.
Thank you for the certification.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. I would just simply add, as Mr. Baker referenced, and as I share with the majority of our educators throughout the corporation, I've been at the last school year. This upcoming year, what we are lucky to do is make sure that while providing all of the necessary supports academically, socially, emotionally for all of our students, we also are going to be implementing levels of accountability, measures of accountability to see to it that our faculty and staff can do what they've been hired to do. Students are coming to school to do what they are required to do. And so we're looking forward to something here and exercising, again, accountability and continuous support.
I would recommend that we get dialogue or press, any of our press releases for back to school, as I mentioned, you know, dress code, and some of the, some of the topics that are going to be reinforced with this to the, for the families and everything to be on the lookout for.
To your point, student absenteeism as well as student behaviors, those are two areas that take away from instructional practitioners, AKA classroom teachers, from being the effective educators that they aspire to be. And we know that in order for us to mold and change the students we're privileged to serve, they have to be at school first.
Dr. Wright, if I may add, today I was a part of session one, it's a two-part series for the TBRI training, and there were an exceptional amount of educators taking a day today and a day tomorrow, full day, to be trained. And it's, as far as from what I was a part of today, it was exceptional, the amount of training, and I appreciate Mrs. Marwood.
Jamie, can you tell the public what TBRI is?
Um, it's trust-based relations intervention, correct? Yes. And I know Elizabeth worked very hard to, to help facilitate that training, and I, I was blown away to see the number of participants from Richmond. In fact, there was one educator who hopped on from Fort Wayne, and he, he actually was in my, my breakout group. And I was very proud of our administrators also in that group trying to go ahead and attract and retain him over taking that opportunity. And so, but he was, he was blown away, and he had shared that to see the interactions with our educators, so I just wanted to.
Appreciate that. And Mrs. Marwood, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, our administrative teams for building along with many of our several staff leaders and to Mr. Volz's point, educators, were all participatory. It was to be an exclusive Richmond Community Schools experience, but we had the potential candidate, everyone at this point is potential candidate. Mrs. Marwood, do you think you want to enlighten us or share with regard to that TBRI?
So this is the second of a two-day training. We had our first one in June. Our second one's happening now. The third one's happening in September, and a lot of positive feedback from building administrators, from teachers, and now from central office.
And, and I will tell you, and that, that was something I shared in one of our breakout groups, is you can replace, you can take a lot of those practices and introduce them in your interactions professionally, your relationships. There, it was, it was something really that there was a foundation for all of your inner interactions that you could build upon.
Thanks for the background, Marwood. Appreciate it.
I did have a question about the, the approach. Dress code's been mentioned a bunch. I would be curious how our faculty and staff, dress code will be addressed, and personally would prefer that be addressed before we crack on the kids, working top down versus making the kids have a strict dress code and then still have a relaxed dress code for our faculty and staff. I don't know if you have any comments or anything, or have any changes.
Well, as, as we understand the various, it has been board policy when it comes to our professional development and grooming guidelines. Those are things that in communication with our faculty and staff, as we have passed, we are going to be moving through dialogue in a meaningful way to return with, with, again, revised and unique approach. In short, we're going to be dialoguing and reporting back by July with direction.
I mean, it just would be best to lead by example.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the table in regards to four point oh seven, the code of conduct. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six zero. Alright, moving on to four point oh eight, Dr. Wright.
President Stoltz, trustees, I ask that Mr. Brent Baker rejoin the conversation for Action item four point zero eight, twenty twenty two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, athletic handbook. Baker. And so Mr. Baker is excited to report. I come before you as a handoff from Mr. Baker to ask for approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four athletic handbook as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I had a couple of comments.
Okay, John.
I'm trying to keep up with some of the changes here. It looks like we're creating a, a coaching or an athletic department review board that will have, according to the document, final say. I don't know, and Mr. Cross might be. I guess I would like to have, you know, what is that true, that doesn't seem like that's truly the final say. So if a student athlete is kicked off the team in athletic offices or kicked off the team, does that student then, and the family, do they only have legal repercussions? Or would it be, make sense for our corporation to have a rarely used board level or more probably likely administrative level that they would then review that? I guess I have concerns with everything being within athletics and no kind of, if that's, you know, that's where it ends, and, you know, we've all seen the court cases.
Well, the answer to your question is, I can only speak to the legal aspects. Essentially, I think it's a fair statement that barring really unusual facts, the participation in ECA is, is, is an opportunity, but it's not considered as part in a right, if you will, of the educational process. The issues you raise, I think, are obvious issues that merit consideration, but those are policy issues as opposed to legal issues. If I have a kid who's, I feel been treated unfairly, chances are I'll be at that microphone at some school board meeting at some point in time after following the process, following complaints and all that. And I think that's, that's one of your, you're always available as a board. I, I think the issue you really want to think about is whether you want to put some intermediary steps at the building or at the high school level, if you're thinking about that, or gets to the board.
I don't think we would want it to come to the board, and so it seems like there should be another step in between.
It's a fundamental precept of labor law dealing with grievances that applies in context wherever a grievance arises. The earlier resolved, the better, because the farther up the process it goes, the more polarized the issues become, and it's harder to get people together. So those are policy issues, but as far as the law requiring them, it does not.
And we can't prevent us from coming to the board. I mean, it's still.
I don't think you want to, but I would, I would say you can.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six zero. Dr. Wright.
President Stoltz, trustees, I ask for Action item four point zero nine, and it's Jamie Volter, join us for, or request for approval. Mrs. Volter.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. In an effort to enhance the overall safety and security of the school community, last month, the Board of School Trustees approved Resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero four, resolution establishing the operating authorization for Richmond Community Schools Police Department. Police officers assigned to school corporation receive the highest quality training specialized in the educational environment. In addition to the National Association of School Resource Officers, NASRO, training, each RCS PD officer will be a graduate of the Tier One Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. This is the highest level of training available. School-based officers focus on the safety and security of students, staff, and visitors. In addition, RCS PD officers will build relationships with students which can promote trust, open communication, and positive interactions. They serve as mentors, role models, resources for students, helping to foster a safe and supportive school environment. Through the recently dissolved SRO Management Agreement, MOU, that Richmond Community Schools, RCS, held with the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, all personnel expenses were paid in full by RCS. That will remain with the creation of RCS PD. Wayne County Sheriff's Department previously deputized Officer Rick Thals, Cody Dudley, and Dustin Cushing, and stationed the officers to serve at RCS. All three dedicated officers will remain on staff with RCS PD as Tier One police officers, the same highest distinction previously held when deputized by Wayne County Sheriff's Department. RCS will continue to pay their salaries and benefits as done historically. RCS PD officers will focus on the essential safety needs of the district and the school community. It is recommended that Officer Thals transition from area manager of school safety resources to the chief of police of RCS PD. Officer Thals is currently also serving as the interim chief of police. It is further recommended that Officers Dudley and Cushing remain as school resource officers. All officers will transition from the Wayne County Sheriff's Department Enforcement Authority to RCS PD Authority. Pursuant to, or pursuant to IC thirty six dash eight dash two dash two, and under the recently dissolved MOU, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department performed all necessary background checks and other hiring provisions when these officers were originally hired by RCS and deputized by the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. This recommendation is a continuation of employment and transition of assignment. RCS PD will continue to work closely with our dedicated professionals at the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, the Richmond Police Department, and other emergency responders to coordinate efforts related to school safety.
Thank you, Mrs. Volter. Alright, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
So we have a motion by Mr. Zaleski, and it has been seconded by Mr. Walton. Any questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero. Alright, next we have four point one zero, Dr. Wright.
President Stoltz, trustees, I do apologize with the last approval of our new, of Richmond Community Schools Police Department. Rick Thals, there has always been in the law enforcement space such a ceremony and or tribute and, and, and a homage to a newly selected chief. And so with that, if you won't mind, I want to ask that Chief Thals join us and with our Notary Public and Master at many traits, Mrs. Scalf is going to join me in carrying out this.
It's a bit of a ceremony, really.
Alright, are you ready? Alright.
Yes.
Alright, Dr. Wright. I, Rick Thals, do solemnly swear.
I, Rick Thals, solemnly swear.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Of the Office of Chief of Police.
Of Office of Chief of Police.
For the Richmond Community Schools Police Department.
The Richmond Community Schools Police Department.
State of Indiana according to the law.
State of Indiana according to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Chief Thals, if you don't mind, just share a few words before you rejoin us for presentation.
Absolutely. It's truly an honor, a privilege. I think Dr. Wright alluded, I may give a little bit of a presentation on where we're at with things here in a few minutes, but for now, I just want to say thank you. I like to bring people a heck of a lot smarter with me, almost like a show and tell, and my father sitting in the back laying the groundwork for where we all are. It truly is an honor and a privilege to be before you today and to accept the challenge, to accept the responsibility for protecting our most precious assets that any of us have before us today. So I accept that. I graciously thank you, and I look forward to where we go from here. Again, we'll, we'll talk about, a little bit about that in, in a few minutes to come. Thank you.
And I would, I would like to ask that you stick around after the board meeting. I would love to get a picture with the board. This is a momentous occasion. So if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Indulging us for that.
And again, as Chief Thals mentioned, we also carried out a very similar ceremony as he was sworn in as interim chief a few weeks ago. And I know he's going to enlighten us as to the progress and the hard work he and his team have been underway with. But I will say that when it comes to the name of Thals, it's synonymous, synonymous with safety and security. And without becoming emotional, welcome and thank you, and thank you to the gentleman who paved the way.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we're moving on. We've got two more action items. Four point one oh, the cheer camp. Dr. Wright.
Yes, ma'am. President Stoltz, trustees, I come before you this evening to ask for approval of Action item four point one zero, so our cheer camp twenty twenty three. The camp will occur Wednesday, August second, from nine AM to twelve PM. It will include tumbling techniques, cheering, along with a slew of fun. And so again, as presented, I come to you for approval for Action item four point one two.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Mops? Alright, any questions or comments?
I think it's worth mentioning that we have a new cheer coach too, this Jessica Shady.
Yeah.
So we're excited about that.
Yes, welcome to Jessica. Definitely excited to have her join us. And I believe we have a new assistant as well, right?
Ashlyn Moore is the assistant, and I believe both of our new coaches have a plethora of experience when it comes to cheerleading. I believe there's some professional experience, and I think our community and our students who participate in those programs are going to be affected tremendously from their instruction.
They have hit the ground running, and they have been very active.
I know Jessica was a college cheerleader and also cheered for the Indiana Pacers and the Nats. Nice knowledge.
I don't want to share any of your personal experience, but I think you too have experience.
Okay. And Jessica's mom was a longtime double-let coach here for Richmond also. Lot of history there.
Lot of history. Thank you. Alright, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero. And next, we move on to four point one one. Dr. Wright.
President Stolz, trustees, I come before you this evening for action item four point one one. Appointments. With action item four point one one, I am simply recommending that Mrs. Jamie Bowser, our Chief Financial slash Community Resources Officer, be appointed as School Treasurer for Richmond Community Schools for the period of July first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as well as recommendation for Melissa Swafford, current Business Coordinator, to continue as appointed. Deputy Treasurer for Richmond Community Schools for the original period of January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And finally, the recommendation that the Board of School Trustees appoint the following persons as representatives for Richmond Community Schools authorized to open and tabulate bids. Myself as Superintendent, Mrs. Jamie Bowser as Chief Financial Community Resources Officer, Mrs. Karen Scowf as Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Alexander Hazelbaker, Director of Technology, and finally, Mrs. Melissa Swafford as Business Coordinator, as presented.
Right.
Does this resend or any previous appointments that were made on January one?
It would replace those original ones with the, to reflect the personnel reorganization.
Got it.
So moved.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Zaleski. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, a second by Mr. Walton. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero. Alright, we're now moving on to the work session of our meeting. Dr. Wright.
President Stolz, trustees, I ask that our newly appointed Chief, Rick Thals Jr., revisit, I said, the podium for a presentation and an update as to where we are with our recently formed Richmond Community Schools Police Department. Chief Thals, the floor is yours, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Again, it's kind of a surreal moment to be before you after the pomp and circumstance of tonight and things that are occurring, but I know it's also very important for us as a community to know exactly where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going with the things that we've been dealing with the past couple of months. First, thank you to any community members, board members, that have expressed the concern, the emotions or fears that kind of surrounded what we've done the past couple of months as a corporation. The reason I say thank you is because you're showing that care and compassion that you have for the children and staff members in these buildings that we are all sworn or affirmed to care about and protect. So it's not anything that any of us take lightly. To say that I've had a little bit of a pulse on everything for the past couple of months, if not longer, would be an understatement. But also to share with you that the way that we are moving forward isn't unique in the history of where our S R O programs have been. Not that any of you need a history lesson, but as a NASRO-trained School Resource Officer, one of the three elements of a School Resource Officer is to be a teacher on law enforcement-related matters. So if you'll humor me for a moment, we'll go back into the Troglodytes of nineteen eighty-seven when a guy with the same name, a Lottowler, was picked by the Richmond Police Department and your board predecessors chose to be innovative and put an officer in the school as a community outreach through the Richmond Police Department and see where it went. It was before there was even the term S R O that we're all comfortable with today. Officer Friendly, actually what it was called, and that's how it began, and he grew that program and then developed. We all know the benefits of that program. They developed to the point of where we said, you know what? We need to do more than just the Richmond High School. We need more officers to be in the other schools, making more of an impact, building relationships with children. And the program adapted. It changed. He became the supervisor for four different S R Os throughout the district, covering Dennis Middle School C Y S test and high school. He became employees of the Richmond Community Schools. They were deputized by the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, ended up from being an officer from the Richmond Police Department into that structure that we most recently became accustomed to. A month ago, the resolution was passed for us to move forward with the Police Department for Richmond Community Schools. A new adaptation, a new change is before us. Once again, you guys have chosen to be very innovative and forward-thinking in protecting the children, staff, and guests of Richmond Community Schools and the properties that they own. Kudos to you. The main concern when I say I had a pulse on where we're at right now, the main concern is the timeline. It's what we've all heard in the public. Nobody really disagrees with the adaptations or the changes that are going on. It's can it be done prior to those children coming back to Richmond Community Schools on August the seventh? Yes, that date was drilled into my head, because we are going to be ready on August the seventh. The concerns are legitimate, but also the research that went into this didn't happen overnight. I didn't present a resume to you today. I didn't introduce myself because a lot of you know me. We are in a small community, but some of the experiences that I've bring from the Sheriff's Department, my previous employer, as the chief deputy, the networking that I didn't think much about at the time, but when it came time to start making phone calls to people saying, get me up to speed here, that has shown very beneficial. I talked to school corporations, chief of police of different school corporations, school-based police departments from across the nation to help figure out the pitfalls. Seven months was about what most people said it took to get this done. But when I got down in the weeds, what slowed you down? Where can we be more efficient? That's where I became confident we can get to August the seventh. The elements that are in place that have happened already, just to give you the updates, we have provided the paperwork to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. We've gotten response back from them acknowledging us as a new police department. We are now authorized to hire and track the training for any officer of the Richmond Community Schools Police Department as a result of that. We were prepared for that. At the point that you passed the resolution, we were prepared to move forward. We didn't wait to figure out that process. We looked for efficient ways to make this happen as quickly as possible. Equipment is a big one. We have to make sure our officers are properly equipped for the job we are asking them to do. As the chief deputy, I was also the quartermaster for the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, so again, I got on that phone. Started explaining to people what we were doing, and guess what? It's not just the Richmond community that loves children. It's people across the state. And those vendors have stepped up. I'm guaranteed they'll have it in hand upon their foot. August first, we will have all the equipment for each of our officers approved tonight to be in place day one, August the seventh. I am confident that will be in place. We have also secured the services of a professional service agency called Lexible. They provide policy work, management, and implementation specific for law enforcement agencies to make sure that we are following best practices, standards within our industry, and that we have the policies in place to help guide us as law enforcement officers to do the right thing at the right time. Those policies, some have described them as the policies that keep you up at night as a chief. I describe them as the ones that give me heartburn thinking about. Those are the ones that we are currently working on, starting now. Those policies are being implemented. Between now and August the seventh, the relevant policies will have been drafted for us to discuss how to implement so that our officers on August seventh are operating under proper policy for a law enforcement agency. That ball's rolling. Each of these balls are rolling. Those are the key elements that we need to have in place to make sure we meet that deadline on August the seventh. The networking that I referred to a minute ago and the reference I made earlier to bringing people a lot smarter than me to the table when we talk. I can't, and I know Chief had to step out for a moment, but I can't say thank you enough to him. He's right. We do share a lot, a very similar path through our different departments, but transgression through the departments that we work for. And he always seems to be the one that I get on that phone and say, hey, help me figure this out. Have you dealt with this? And again, he steps up tonight, unprovoked on my part, to say the things that he said. So thank you to him. I bring that up, not only to say thank you, but there is no doubt in my mind. Let's think about life for a minute. August first, I'm guaranteed to have the equipment for the officers. How much does a guarantee work today? We get stuck on a cargo ship, mail to the wrong address. We are on a tight timeline. There is not room for error, which means we have to have concessions in place, plan B's in place. And I hope tonight, if nothing else, the public and you are confident, even if we do not, which we will, we will never allow the safety and the security of the children, the staff members, and the guests of Richmond Community Schools to be compromised. We will have a solution in place. As employees, we are able to fill two of the three triad models of the NASRO. The teacher, the counselor, mentor, we can do that with or without a badge. The law enforcement officer, we need the equipment to do that, to stand in that gap against violence. We need that equipment to do that. So I have no doubt in my mind that we can address all three of those things on August seventh, either with the plan that's in place currently, the timeline that's in place, the confidence that we will get there, or any other deep floors we need to take to accomplish that along the path as we go. So hopefully, that filled in a few of the gaps, some of the questions. I think Mr. Cross mentioned earlier, there are a lot of particularities that go into creating a department. Some nobody can ever predict. You learn them as you go. You don't know what you don't know, and you figure them out as you go. So I, for the past several months, have been learning what I don't know, figuring out what we need to figure out, and I still stand before you today confident we are on track. We are figuring those things out. I welcome the questions to me, especially now that I am that figurehead or chief of police for the Richmond Community Schools Police Department. I expect that. I want that. I also want to make sure today that we are able to close that gap in those narratives so that you too can speak to your constituents about what's going on, because I know you've had a lot of questions as well. But as you get questions you don't know answers to, if you don't, you will have my cell phone number, and we will get through those conversations. I will guide you through those. I will tell you exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. And we will make sure that we're not only transparent with you as a Board of Trustees, but more importantly, we're transparent with the public in what our Police Department is doing and why we are doing it, which is a good segue into the final thing I want to talk about, is where we're going. The transparency into what we do and why we do it is paramount to the training and the belief of the officers that you put in place as School Resource Officers and/or Chief of Police. The care and compassion has to be there. The relationship building has to be there. That's an element in our hiring processes that we will be focusing on in future hires. I am so thankful for the fact that we will start with an equal workforce as we ended last year. The faces will be the same to the kids and staff. The uniform might be a little different, but the faces will be the same. The relationships will be the same. That is huge for us moving forward. As we hire new employees, as we get to full staffing again with four officers, as we bring that right person into the equation, that's where we will start to look at programming and things that we can do as a group to make an impact on the children and the community as a whole. Where are we needing? That assessment still has to be completed. That will be completed. It'd be input from you. Trust me, I've got a lot of input already on attendance and base. We will continue to get input on where we are needed, and we will be a part of creating programs that will allow us to interact, not always in an enforcement capacity, but it will allow us to interact in a relationship-building capacity to solve the problem at hand. The S R O program historically has proven that relationships matter. The program started and was built on relationships. As it adapted, it maintained its focus on relationships. And as we move forward, we will continue to look at the relationships that we hold dear to us with these children, the staff, the parents, and any guests of Richmond Community Schools. So in closing, I'm excited. I hope that, I mean, I'm not an overly emotional person, but at the same time, I hope you see me smile a little bit more than I do usually, because I am. I'm excited about this. I'm passionate about this, and I feel privileged to be a part of this. So knowing that I can't answer every single question in a presentation, I do open it up to questions from anybody, for that matter, that things that may have been on your list of concerns or...
I can see it on your face. I've known you for years. I think I've seen you smile more tonight than all those years combined, so.
Other questions, comments?
Moving forward, can you kind of talk about plan a little bit or your idea of, are we going to continue with three officers? Are we looking to expand that into other buildings? Or just kind of give us your goal?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I think I kind of left that out as something I intended to bring up earlier. Because we do have to have a plan for that day one, that August seventh, and then where are we going to go from there? So August seventh, the intention is to pick up right where we left on. At last year, we had an S R O myself at the high school performing those duties. Dennis Middle School had an S R O at it as well, as well as C Y S. Those were the three schools that we routinely covered as an S R O group last year. That's the intention of what we will be doing on August the seventh. The tests and elementary buildings will continue to be serviced as needed and as they're able to by the Richmond Police Department. Chief Ritt, in one of our previous conversations that he alluded to, those were one of the talking points that we talked about. We want to make sure everything stays the same on August the seventh. Moving forward, yes, we've got to start to contemplate, how are we going to adapt? How are we going to grow in order to provide the service to the Richmond Community Schools as a whole? I'm going to tell you what best practice is right now. It's going to scare you to death, but I can tell you that there's a way we can get there. Best practice is to put one officer in every single school building that has a child in it. That'd be very difficult for us to do. We all know that. I think we can slowly, as budgets allow, increase our staffing to the point to we're able to make a really good appearance and be available to every building in the Richmond Community Schools. Currently, we are already budgeted for four officers. I've been on the phone today, as well as many other days, talking and recruiting several officers to apply. I hope those come through. We are seeking certified officers that are Tier One graduates of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy with three years of experience. Academy with three years of experience. Again, the best practice that's taught to us by NASRO, that's why we are there, but also there's some logic to why we're there that we all understand as well. If we need to look at applicants that need to go through the academy, we'll do what we got to do. We'll be mindful about that, there's some pitfalls and concerns with doing that, but we'll do what we got to do to fill these ranks with the right people. So, that fourth officer, we are in current stages of recruiting. That officer will fill in the tests, cover Hibbert, and also be, allow us to fill in some gaps when people are sick, training's going on, or other things come up in our responsibilities at the other buildings. The fifth officer, if we get to that point, will then be the one that's able to go to the elementary schools, is able to fill in at the high school, is able to do the things that we know we need to start thinking about. And then from there, we'll see where we go. But yeah, the hope as your chief of police is that we eventually are able to provide services to every building in Richmond Community Schools. Now, I say that with caution, because what I don't want to be perceived by any law enforcement agency, Wayne County Sheriff's Department or Richmond Police Department, is that we don't want them in our buildings, we do. I agree with what Chief Britt said. Richmond Community Schools do need to be protected by Richmond Police Officers alongside Richmond Community School Police Department Officers as well. So, that's my intention moving forward, is to continue to work on those relationships to make sure we have coverage of all buildings when needed, and then as we're financially able to grow, we'll look at those options.
And Chief Thols, just to be clear, as you mentioned, at this juncture currently, right now, we have the same personnel that we had at the conclusion of twenty twenty-two to twenty-three school season. Same amount of officers, same amount of budget positions, and we have some great leads on potential candidates, which puts us ahead of many law enforcement agencies, not only in the city, county, state, but also country.
One of my, I was, I dealt a lot with the hiring with Wayne County Sheriff's Department as well, and we all know law enforcement right now is hurting. Manpower is a legitimate concern, hiring is a legitimate concern. So, the problem of hiring for our open position is not unique to us and the difficulties that we're going to face. But I pledge to you as your chief of police, we will find a unique solution to fill in those roles. And we will, I'm confident, I've had great conversations about it, but it's one of those, if we need to adapt a little bit to get things done, we're going to do so. But it is a huge relief to me to know that the team that was in place last year is excited, I speak for them, with their permission, they are excited about moving forward with this, they are on board with this, they are appreciative of you guys as well, and it gives me the confidence as chief of police that, yeah, we will hit the ground running right where we were last year with the same personnel.
Again, how quality, tier one?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so, the real devil in the details is the policy piece when it comes to an enforcement division. We've signed a contract with a company, I believe, to be able to assist in that process. So, most of the policies for law enforcement, the ninety-five percent is kind of standardized, then it's figuring out the five percent that's unique to us. And I would assume the board still needs to approve those policies. We have one meeting in two weeks between now and the first day of school. Is that feasible and is that a two-board meeting policy, Ron, that we need to...
I guess, would you need first reading and second reading?
Right, is that a two-board meeting for that?
That's a good question, and I, in the perfect world, I would say definitely, yes. I think what you're really talking about is not, and I think we're getting careful the terms we use, because they become terms of art when you start getting into the law enforcement arena, and we're really talking protocols. And those are operating procedures, they would be more akin to administrative guidelines for implementing your policies than they are your policies themselves. You made your policy statement when you created the resolution that allowed the department to be created. That being said, I think everything is going to be coming forth, is, needs to be presented to the board and vetted, but I am not convinced that, and I haven't seen them, so I don't, I mean, I think a lot of the devil will be in those details, but working, standing working orders and protocols are the way that departments typically operate.
Right, and that's how you limit your liability or...
Well, that's, that's how you create a functional department, because there has to be, the nice thing about policies or protocols, whatever the term you use, is if followed, first of all, they're predicated upon someone's experience, hopefully several experiences, and I hate to use the term best practices, because I don't like to use superlatives. Best can probably always be improved upon, but they're certainly predicated upon better practices, and they define, allow people to create expectations and allow people to perform to meet those defined expectations. So, I think you're always going to have a role in it, and I think it's going to be a very hands-on role, but I think it's an area of expertise where we're looking at this gentleman and people he surrounds himself with to steer us in the right direction, because I don't report to have the answers to what standard protocols for enforcement division ought to look like. I don't know.
And if I may have talked just a little bit on point with that, the, again, I didn't give you the resume of all the things I did, I don't like talking about myself that much, but as a member of the Sheriff's Department, I was also the accreditation manager for a period of time. Accreditation processes are, are predicated on the proper policies being in place and being able to prove to the accrediting body that you're following those policies. But during that time, I hate to say I didn't enjoy it, but at the same time, it wasn't quite what I envisioned for law enforcement policy work, but as I was in it, the knowledge that I was able to get from showing that the Wayne County Sheriff's Department did what they said they were supposed to do, is something I'll be able to utilize as we draft these policies with Lexible moving forward. I predict the ability to move through these policies fairly quickly with Lexible. After your question, is it feasible or necessary? I know these should be available within the next couple of weeks. It's going to be a heavy lift, but I'm confident I'll be able to get it to the point to where we can put more eyes on it, to get legal opinions and approvals that used to be necessary.
I do not see them as being a part of the board policy manual, if that answers your question.
Okay.
I think these are going to be a standalone document, collection of documents, that will govern the operational aspects of the Richmond Police Department, Richmond Community Schools.
And as far as equipment goes, car safety equipment for the officers, are those where we at?
So, the majority of the equipment that you see an officer carrying or wearing is being provided through a company called Nelson and Company. They're a uniform company that also deals with the belts, the holsters, the things, again, that you see the officer carrying. They have promised me August first, they will have everything to us for all three officers. We have already gone to their, their store in Carmel, Indiana, been fitted, measured, everything's been ordered, he's looked through his computer to make sure things are in stock and it should be.
I guess one point of policy, quote, or decision-making that I think the board might want to weigh in on is, what do you want that officer's uniform to look like? I mean, what, what first impression do you want that officer to make to the students? I don't know if there's been that discussion or not, I mean, certainly we want it to be identifiable as a law enforcement officer, but that's a spectrum of possibilities.
The way that I've been moving forward with it for conversation for the group is I want us to have a professional appearance as a police department. Our uniforms that we have are black in color because they can't be brown, or do they need to be navy blue? That differentiates us between the other law enforcement agencies in the community. They will be that professional appearing law enforcement uniform that, if you remember, you're used to me soon. It will have the shiny buttons on it, and we'll have those things to give that a professional appearance. That's what we want day one coming out the gate. Down the road, I think that's when we need to continue conversations about, and I didn't come up with this term, I don't know if it's the correct one, but a softer uniform. A lot of the other agencies across the state have authorized their school resource officers to still carry the equipment that they need, but they're wearing cargo pants and polo shirts, softer uniform. So, there's conversations that we need to have about that down the road, but initially to get the equipment in, get the uniforms in, I focus on that professional appearance of the uniform.
So, what you're saying is you want to have that conversation, wear the Jordans with your outfit, right? Knowing you, that's what I...
Well, keep his dad out of the conversation, he's going to have red and white striped pants.
It took some, took some reserve on my part not to wear the Jordans today, but I didn't think they were appropriate. Yeah, they are. That Friday, Monday shoe day will probably be part of this play.
Which, which is, just to piggyback on that, again, coming, whether it be uniforms, whether it be resources, relationships is what it really boils down to. And of the relationship that you all have already built, the foundation that has already been established throughout our school community, will continue to be enhanced upon, but to know that we have three of the most challenging aspects that most law enforcement agencies are facing. We have personnel, we can see that box is checked off and improving, resources. We have the resources to continue to maintain that high quality of safety and security, and ultimately the support of our now fellow law enforcement community. Know that those things are in lockstep and we're currently sitting in that position.
I just pointed on the record that Mr. Fowler and Mrs. Bolser were both put on notice about shoe game. You saw, you saw them work out big time, and he started talking about wearing Jordans.
Now, there were moments where I just, you know, the Jordans, I vote for them. That's a softer uniform.
But nevertheless, again, Chief Thols, we appreciate your, appreciate your hard work that you all put in.
I just would add, so, I, I think the opportunity is here, I mean, I can, I, I've read a lot of research on the, you know, full officers out of schools and what officers do when they're in schools, and I think this gives us an opportunity to look at, you know, student arrests and how we are handling the students. I mean, we do not want an armed SWAT in our schools, and so, if we can, through policy, and now that it's Richmond Schools Police Force, that now offers the board some input into what those policies look like. So, as we look at some data, which I'd like to see on what we're doing with students, how they're being processed, I think there will be some future discussions, and as we move forward, I understand, let's start day one same, but moving forward, it gives us great opportunity to really change how we do this school policing, if you will, and, and I think, and I'm, I think that's one of the best benefits of making this change, is now we have opportunity to have that look like what we as the board, the seven, want it to look like, with your input, Dr. Wright's input, Mr. Cross's input, and all our stakeholders.
Absolutely. One of the underlying philosophies, I think law enforcement has kind of gotten sideways on over the years, Rick's opinion, not proven fact, is that the juvenile justice system was built upon the concept of finding the least restrictive measure possible to enact a change in a child's life. There are a lot of things that can happen prior to the point of an arrest that we will be in a position to fill that gap as that mentor, as that teacher. That's kind of on point what I'm hearing from you, I apologize if I'm hearing...
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
So, those will be philosophies that will be ingrained into, honestly, again, going back to the fact that we've got the same team moving forward, they have already started that philosophy. A lot of credit needs to be given to the Wayne County Probation Department and some of the trainings that they have provided, and again, it's allowed us to focus in that school resource officer mindset through the trainings that we have, to use care and compassion to enact that change in a child's life. However, we can't forget about the need for this change in a child's life. Sometimes the arm around the shoulder will be enough, sometimes it won't. And that's where, as your chief of police, I will help these conversations, because one of the most important tools each of your officers will carry with them every day is discretion. And I want to make sure that I share with you appropriately, as a new school board, looking at new policies of a new police department, that we do not want to put policies in place that limit discretion. We want our officers to be empowered, to know the times when it's time to put the arm around the shoulder and when it's time to make that arrest. And we will, that's a training issue, that's something that we have already started to tackle, and that's something, as your chief of police, we will continue to enforce and impart on our officers through our training.
Thank you so much for the update, we're excited, just, we're expecting great things, don't fail us now. I love your confidence and your enthusiasm, so thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
So, before our adjournment, I think there was an introduction, we've got a mystery man at the table, right?
Yes, we do.
Some people might be saying, who is this guy?
And prior to the acknowledgement of our mystery man, I also would like to pay homage to a gentleman who has served in our corporation for more than four decades, who has recently made the decision to retire from service, and that is Mr. Glenn Slifer, our former director of facilities, who we wish the very best to as he takes the next step in the metaphor chapter of life. Forty-plus years, Mr. Slifer was appreciated and dedicated and committed, so we thank him for that. With that being said, yes, the mystery man at the table that I'm going to ask to join us here at the podium is none other than Mr. Mark Fowler, our new chief of secondary education. Mr. Fowler, officially welcome, I know that you have spent some time on the road, to say the least. Mr. Fowler joins us from the sunny state of California, but he also has local roots here in the county, as well as here within the city, not going to steal any more thunder, but how many hours were you on the road at fifty-five miles per hour, Chief Thols? He was abiding by the speed limit.
Not blowing, wait.
In the caravan of oneself, because you were by yourself, right?
I was by myself, so, thank you so much, First President Stoltz, Superintendent Wright, Board of Trustees. I, I, unlike Chief Thols, am emotional, I'm excitable, I'll probably get emotional talking about this, but I was on the road for fifty hours. One of my brothers was supposed to come out and drive a vehicle back with me in true sibling fashion, he bailed at the last minute. So, I went and got a U-Haul, and as I was driving the U-Haul home, I saw my rearview mirror that said on the wheel that the speed limit was fifty-five, and I realized, well, that, that's a problem, because most of the trip, the speed limit is seventy-five. So, it took me fifty hours, I did test the U-Haul trailer and blew out a tire in Springfield, Missouri, so fifty-five is an actual, that's not a suggestion.
It's not a suggestion.
I think what I would just start with is how incredibly honored and humbled I am. I'm born and, born and raised in Richmond, Indiana, very proud of that. After high school, basketball took me to Eastern Wyoming, Torrington, Wyoming, and, which was awesome, my family didn't have finances to send me to college otherwise, so thankfully I was able to, to score a little bit and went to Eastern Wyoming. After Eastern Wyoming, I transferred to Fresno Pacific University, which was an amazing experience for me. I currently serve on the Board of Trustees at Fresno Pacific University, which is an amazing experience for me, it was an institution that changed my life. And so, I met my wife, she was a volleyball player, just so we're clear on the athletic ability in our family, they won national championships, the only people in the gym for basketball games was the coach and the team. And so, she did not lose in her entire career of volleyball, as many games as I lost in my first season at Fresno City, so. We both got our credentials to teach, I started teaching at a school called Carruthers High School, which was amazing, I was there for sixteen years, and I think what that school taught me, which is what I've heard here over and over, is how to serve students, communities, and families. And it taught me the value, it taught me that education can change the socioeconomic trajectory of families' life, it can change their educational trajectory, and we as the, the people who have the honor to serve them get to play a part in that. I, I most recently served at a school in the mountains, Minarets High School, which was another privilege for me, and at the end of that, there were some opportunities that were presented to me, I mean, nothing can speak to me like coming home and serving in this community. So, my wife, who has never been outside of Fresno, California, her and my four children are on their way, they're going to be here August first, they are, my children... They are, my children are anxiously awaiting to see the school buildings and their teachers. My wife is trusting me that this is going to be an experience that we're going to get to share as a family and get to serve in a community that I love. And so I've been in education for eighteen years and it's a privilege.
How old are your kids?
Well, you put me on the spot after I got emotional. I have a seventeen-year-old who's going to be a junior, so they'll all be at Richmond High School. I have a fifteen-year-old who's going to be a sophomore. I have a twelve-year-old who's going to be a seventh grader, and I have a seven-year-old going on twenty-one who's going to be a second grader. So I'm very, very, very excited. I was shocked to hear that Lori Fowler, who's my sister-in-law, we will be on the same team, pulling on the same side of the rope, so that's exciting. So I've been away for twenty-four years, and so coming back has just been amazing. And if I could just say thanks to a few people, Jamie Bolser was amazing in this process. As you can imagine, there are so many moving parts and getting a family of six and, and working through things. And just her valuing people in the family was amazing, and it made me so certain that we did the right thing. Ms. Stoltz and Dr. Wright and just their, their warmth and their welcoming, it's just an amazing experience. I lived in a state where, I know you take this for granted, I don't, because I've, I've seen other districts and how they operate. And this is not normal, and it's so awesome for me. And Mr. Baker here, from day one, has kind of taken me under his wing here in the central office and showed me the way. And so I'm just extremely thankful, I'm thankful to you as a board for your confidence in me, and I'm just, you won't see me stop smiling, I am just so privileged and honored to serve here, so.
One of the things that Mr. Fowler referenced, and one of the things that any leader knows, is that the challenge is to multiply oneself, trying to surround yourself with like-minded individuals that will address matters as you will. And upon the first conversation, second and third with Mr. Fowler, it was apparent that he's, he's a role city patron through and through. And the love for his childhood, neighborhood, and community is what brought him back to pay it forward and serve the future of our city. So thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you so much, thank you.
President Stoltz, trustees, I know that our work session is typically geared not necessarily toward updates and things, but we do also have Mr. Kevin McCurdy in the, the crowd, and I saw by his response, he's going to be so excited to join us at the podium just to give us a brief update and synopsis with the project underway at Richmond High School. I know that this board in particular, even prior to my arrival as superintendent, has put resources in motion to see to it that the high school comes together. And so, Mr. McCurdy, if you can just spend maybe two and a half to three minutes on a brief update as to where we are.
Not much time to cover a lot of ground. And, and so I'll go with kind of some of the more high priority in terms of school starting. In terms of the flooring project, corridor flooring project, we've been looking at that. I come through and actually I walk the school at six o'clock, six-thirty every morning. It, it has been on track for the most part, we've hit a couple of pickups, but it's worth taking a look at if you haven't. They have the main thoroughfare there on the first floor completely done with the flurrazo, and I think it looks great personally, but you know, that's for you to judge. On the second floor, they've got the main floor done, other than the touch of the perimeter. So we feel like we're on schedule for that work. We did hit a couple of pickups in terms of some maintenance that was going on, but I think we've got some ways to overcome those projects or those challenges we've hit. Some of the other projects that are going on is the chemical modernization that's been going on for a little while. We did get all the electrical put in finally in, so we are able to finish, I guess, the last big push to get that done. What will remain are punchless items that we need to work through, so. And with the project of that scale, it touches that many spaces, there's, there's just quite a bit of the little oddities that we need to clean up, but we're working through that process. But we feel like all those spaces will be usable for the upcoming school year, so.
I did check out the, the flurrazo and it is looking really good, love it.
I love to hear that from someone who's been in the trenches for two years.
Yes, been all of it in two years.
It's been a hard fought battle, but I think the outcome is worth it.
Yes.
For our students, they're so deserved, I want five of these staff who serve every day. Thank you, Mr. McCurdy.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for the good of the cause? Without further ado, we will adjourn, thank you very much.